If I didn't get out of here in some month in the winter, I would be pretty quick. I have to have sunshine.
Okay, we'll call the
It was just like ice glazed over when I drove out.
The meeting of the Planning Commission to order. We need to approve the agenda and the minutes for the Planning Commission for October 25th, 2023. Any corrections, changes, additions? Motion?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
I'll make a motion.
Second?
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. We'll go to new business. Flintlock Range Association requests for a conditional use permit. 2023-9CUP Flintlock request. Diva.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is a request for a conditional use permit for an outdoor sports park including shooting ranges and courses with public and private events on a county-owned parcel. The property includes 360 acres, zoned forest agriculture recreation, FAR1. The Cook County zoning ordinance identifies private and public recreational facilities, such as camping areas, golf courses, as a listed conditional use. The property is non-shoreland. For general project description, Flintlock Range Association is requesting a conditional use permit to operate an outdoor sports park, which will host a variety of shooting ranges, courses, and host shooting activity related to private and public events. The proposed use will be seasonal from spring to late fall, May to November, during the daylight hours from dawn to dusk. The property is county-owned. The Flintlock Range Association will enter into a lease with the county to utilize the land. A draft of the lease is enclosed in this packet. The application includes the Flintlock Range Association's purpose statement, which states as follows: "The Flintlock Range Association is dedicated to providing a safe, comprehensive, and educational shooting and archery range, catering to individuals and law enforcement officials seeking to enhance their firearms proficiency and practice responsible gun ownership." The purpose statement also explains that this facility will be used as a training facility for law enforcement officials and host youth and volunteer firearm safety certifications. Please refer to the next page of the packet for detailed information on phases one and two, as described in the conditional use permit application. For background, the subject parcel proposed for this use is owned by Cook County. The Flintlock Range Association has been working with the Cook County Attorney's Office to secure a lease to use the land for this purpose. The lease is proposed to be finalized upon the completion of the conditional use permit process, so that any considerations brought forward during this process may be integrated into the lease if needed. The application includes several letters of support, including Cook County Parks and Trails Commission Chair Randy Knutson, Minnesota Conservation Officer Kylan Hill, Cook County Sheriff Pat Eliason, Far North Tactical Owner and Instructor Jerry Diswader, and Grand Portage of Lake Superior or Chippewa Tribal Chairman Robert Deschamps. On page six of 145 of your packets is the draft outline, which includes phase one and two. Phase one and two is what this conditional use permit request is for. The range of this timeline is anticipated to be from 2023 through 2025. During phase one, they plan to lay out the range itself. Add 20 to 30 vehicle parking spaces with consideration for EMS and fire. Put in some storage boxes for temporary storage. Conduct a 400-yard centerfire rifle range with targets at 100-yard increments. Construct 50-yard and 100-yard pistol and rifle range for rimfire, centerfire, and black powder firearms. Identify and map out the archery walking trail and range. Develop and construct a location for trap shooting. Install gates at the entry of the range and on auxiliary road to the east of range entrance at a porta potty. Host youth training and certifications. Host adult classes. Design a website for membership and range information. And construct shooting benches, covered shooting area, and picnic benches. Then from 2024 to 2025, phase two is to collaborate with a school to develop a youth trap shooting league and/or archery club. Engage the community to develop events and educational opportunities. Build and add storage for permanent storage. Construct a vault toilet and pavilion. Add a biathlon course. Do sporting plays in skeet towers. And host firearms hunter safety classes for youth and adults. For zoning considerations, the Cook County zoning ordinance outlines the requirements of the FAR1 zone district. The principal purpose of this zone district is to provide forest management, agriculture uses, and recreational activity in the less developed areas of the county. This zone district is the most rural zone district in Cook County and is unique for allowing dog kennels as a permitted use and has a 20-acre minimum lot size. The zoning ordinance identifies, quote, "private and public recreational facilities," such as camping areas, golf courses, et cetera, as a listed conditional use. I included some photos on page seven of your packet, which show the Forest Road, as well as the approximate site of the proposed range. For site conditions and consideration, the range design, the application materials indicate that the properly constructed berms and backstops will be used along the sides and backstops of the range. The application cites the DNR Outdoor Shooting Range Best Practices and the NRA Range Sourcebook for establishing this facility. For septic, a porta potty is listed in phase one and a vault toilet is listed in phase two. For impervious surface coverage, impervious surface is not an issue to the large parcel size and nature of the activity. Wetland delineation was completed on this parcel and is included in the application materials. The delineation map helps direct proposed activities outside of the wetland areas. The property is relatively flat. Project plans include creating berms for barriers of the ranges. For lighting, the activity is proposed to take place during daylight hours, therefore no outdoor lighting is likely to be necessary. It could be addressed whether any security lighting is proposed or anticipated, and if so, what that would include. For safe access, the property is located approximately .7 miles off the Gunflint Trail along US Forest Service Road 304. The application indicates that the road use permit through the US Forest Service will be secured. For parking, there is parking identified on the site plans. As to be expected, noise is a subject for consideration, so I put quite a bit of detail about that in the application narrative. With shooting activities as the primary proposed purpose, noise is the most obvious possible impact to the use of neighboring properties. To gather data on this, Flintlock Range Association completed a sound study in collaboration with the DNR in January of 2015 to quantify noise from this location and use. The sound study included three sites. Five different types of firearms were used in the sound study, each shooting three rounds. Of all the tests run, no site measured a decibel level above 40 decibels. It is also important to note that this study was done in January, which are leap-off conditions during which time sound travels further due to the lack of forest cover. I included a summary page of what different decibels of sound levels sound like. Again, none of the sounds registered over 40 decibels, and 40 decibels is equal to the sound of a refrigerator hum. On page 10 of your staff narratives, I have a map where I tried to geographically reference where those three sites were taking the samples from. I'm happy to answer any questions about that analysis if you have further questions. For public noticing, the application was legally noticed in the Cook County News Herald on November 17th. Thirty letters of notification were sent to adjacent property owners, as well as county departments. Two letters of correspondence were received during the written comment period. Shawn Williams of 231 County Road 60 commented, "He was neutral regarding this proposal. He provided three documents with design considerations for noise mitigation. He provided some presentation slides regarding the Grandview Shooting Range Noise Reduction Project. He provided the EPA document of the best management practices for lead at outdoor shooting ranges. The draft lease agreement with the Cook County Attorney's Office also includes a leasing responsibility to engage in lead mitigation efforts in accordance with these EPA best management practices." And then he also provided the CDC document, "Measuring of Exposure to Impulsive Noise at Indoor and Outdoor Firing Ranges During Tactical Training Exercises." And I included links to those documents as well. The second comment letter was from Mark and Randy Johnson from Harris, Minnesota. They own 160 acres of land classified as rural vacant, meaning there's no buildings on it, less than one mile from the proposed range. They feel the range will have an impact on their property, specifically the noise. They take exception to the sound study. They have concerns on the impact to Forest Road 304 from the increased use. They feel there are alternative land uses that the county should consider for this property. And they cited concerns related to a different range elsewhere in the state and had various questions. And those comments are included in your packets. Staff recommendation for consideration: Shooting ranges have state requirements to adhere to, as outlined in Minnesota State Statutes, Chapter 87A. The surrounding area of this site is largely public land with a few private undeveloped parcels nearby, all zoned FAR1. There are two levels of local government interaction with this activity, the conditional use permit, as well as the drafted five-year lease agreement with the Cook County Attorney's Office. The Flintlock Range Association proposes to develop a master plan, a safety plan, and an operation manual for the range. The location of this range is strategically located within a driving distance of the city of Grand Marais and centralized in the county and located in an unpopulated area to mitigate impact to residential zone districts. The FAR1 zone district with the abutting public lands is the most desirable surrounding land use for this type of use. The application and support letters that Cook County state that Cook County is the only county in Minnesota that does not have an official gun range. Conservation Officer Kylan Hill's letter points out that this range will provide a safe space for everybody to have access to learn safe firearm handling and shooting practice. This will provide a designated space to shoot safely, providing a safer alternative to the old gravel pit shooting sites historically used. There are three primary land use considerations with this request. The first is lead mitigation. This is the most significant potential environmental concern related to shooting ranges, which are from lead landing in wetlands or streams, which contaminates surface and groundwater. There are wetlands and surface water on this 360-acre property. However, the shooting ranges are proposed to be placed in upland areas. The EPA manual for best practices provide a template to for environmental stewardship plan. This type of document may be beneficial to help mitigate the potential impacts of lead contamination. The Flintlock Range Association has indicated that they already planned to create a master plan, safety plan, and operation manual, so it is possible that this type of planning is already intended to be included with one of these documents. Discussion with the applicants on this element of the request could help clarify this point and support this as a condition. Item number two is safe road access and maintenance. Accessing this facility from Forest Road 304 from the Gunflint Trail will see increased use and maintenance needs. The application indicates that road use permit through US Forest Service will be secured. The maintenance element of this access is unclear. Does the FRA plan to set aside funds for road maintenance as needed? And number three is noise. This is a noise generating activity. However, the sound studies summarized earlier in this report indicates that this use shouldn't have a minimal impact on neighboring properties for sound. The berm should also help decrease the noise, and other design elements may be available for consideration to assist with noise reduction if needed. The location of this proposed range is well-suited to have minimal impact on residentially zoned properties while still having reasonably close access to developed areas of the county. This request should be assessed by the standards set forth in Section 10.05 of the Cook County zoning ordinance as follows. The general criteria and requirements for conditional use permits. The four main criteria for reviewing a conditional use permit are as follows: The use conforms to the land use or comprehensive plan of the county. The use is compatible with the existing neighborhood. The use will not impede the normal and orderly development or improvement in the surrounding area of uses permitted by right in the zone district. And the location and character of the proposed use is considered to be consistent with a desirable pattern of development for the area. From my analysis, I did provide some potential findings for your consideration, as well as conditions should you choose to approve the application or recommend approval. The first is Cook County zoning ordinance identifies private and public recreational facilities and camping areas, such as golf courses, as a listed conditional use in the FAR1 zone district. Number two, there's a social and environmental benefit to the county and its constituents to have a designated shooting range for the community and law enforcement, providing a safe alternative for individuals and groups seeking responsible firearm education and recreational activities. This county-owned property requires both a conditional use permit, as well as a lease agreement with Cook County. Number four, proper design and operational plan should mitigate the potential impacts of noise, traffic, and environmental contamination. Number five, the sound study conducted in 2015 indicates that this facility will comply with Minnesota noise standards. And number six, this proposal is supported by the Cook County Parks and Trails Commission, the DNR, Cook County Sheriff, and Grand Portage Band of Lake Superior or Chippewa. If approved, the following conditions may be considered. Number one, all activities shall comply with Minnesota State Statute 87A. Number two, this conditional use permit includes all activities listed in phase one and phase two of the Flintlock Range Association. Number three, a current valid lease agreement is signed with Cook County. The renewal of the lease agreement must be completed. If the lease is not renewed, all shooting activities must cease until a new lease is signed. Number four, shooting activities shall be permitted from May through November from dawn to dusk. Number five, lead mitigation is actively managed through best management practices and outlined in an environmental stewardship plan for management of lead and bullets, or other pre-existing plan if applicable. Number six, road access permit through US Forest Service is secured. Number seven, design and operational decisions implement noise reduction practices when available. And number eight, all local, state, and federal regulations must be adhered to, including grade fill permits and land use permits for structure placements.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Sorry, that was so long.
Nice reading. Good job. Is someone here who wishes to speak for the Flintlock Organization?
Yes, ma'am. Justin Rexroad, President of Flintlock Range Association.
Can you take a seat near the microphone, so everyone can hear? And would you state your name and address? Physical home address?
My name is Justin Rexroad, to Gustav Lane, Grand Marais.
Thank you. And do you wish to add comments to Ms. Maxwell's report?
Cook County is a mecca for recreation, outdoor recreation. We have over 450 miles of snowmobile trails and 400 kilometers of cross-country ski trail, actually the largest system in the United States. We believe that it's time for the shooting sports enthusiasts and the outdoorsmen to be able to have a place, an organized place, to shoot for instruction, for firearm safety, proper firearm handling, and to help with the abundance of shooting that goes on in gravel pits, where oftentimes people don't pick up after themselves. Most of us in this room that are shooters have seen some of the messes it causes. It's not something we like to see as sportsmen, because it gets easily, our image gets tarnished because of one person or multiple people. To have an organized shooting range in Cook County, we believe, would help this. It could be a place where there could be shooting sports competitions and leagues, such as high school trap league, which is the fastest-growing sport in Minnesota and has been for a long time, along with other types of trap shooting and skeet shooting, shotgun sports, as well as any type of pistol and rifle shooting competitions. Cook County is long overdue for this. I've been here almost 14 years, and I can tell you that I'm tired of going to the gravel pits. It takes me a long time to set up, and a lot of times I can't always get in there due to, especially in the springtime, because of the roads are too muddy, too mucked up, or whatever, or the county's in there working, they're active pits, they're crushing, they're pulling material out of there, and at that point, I don't feel safe to shoot around people that are actively working. I think this would have a great benefit to the Cook County residents, along with other people that come up here seasonally or are coming through the area on a weekend basis or a week-long basis, or however long they are here for, to have a place to go and shoot, to have a place to sight in your rifle before deer season, to have a place to shoot your archery equipment. And it's safe, it's away from town, the noise will be minimal, it's a great place for it. I can't think of a better location at this time for a shooting range. I've looked around, I've been involved with the Flintlock Range Association for over a year now, and I had known about it long before, when there was a previous group that was trying to get this initiative going. It's time, and I've gotten a tremendous amount of support. Flintlock Range Association's gotten a tremendous amount of support for this to happen. Every time I mention to somebody in the community that, hey, we're starting to get a shooting range going, the first thing they say, "It's needed. It's needed. It's needed."
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Does anyone else wish to speak about the conditional use permit application? I'm going to have you step up and say, I'm going to have you, Mr. Axel Rexroad.
Rexroad.
Take your seat and let someone else come up and... State your name and address, please.
Yeah, Mark Johnson, 46065 Evergreen Avenue, Harris, Minnesota. We own the 160 acres, it's near the proposed site of the shooting range. We purchased this in 20, the first 80 and 20, and then the adjacent, two adjacent 40s in 21, beginning of 21. It's a nice piece of land. From the highest point, you can see Lake Superior, both to the south and to the east and to the north. You can see probably into Canada, we're not positive on that, but we think probably into Our intention was, we would probably try to build there, probably initially a cabin, and then hopefully later, perhaps a residence. All that depends on things like finances and so forth. So with a considerable dismay when we got the letter that's saying that there's going to be a proposal to have a rifle range near us. The reason, one reason, or the main reason why this was quite distressing, was for the past 40 years, or over 40 years, we've been living near a rifle range in Harris there. And we know how disruptive it is and impactful, both to us who are near it and also to the general area. So we had sent a letter, which I hope you'll have a chance to look at or read through, with our concerns and the questions we have. That's all there. But I do have a couple of things that, we didn't know about the conditions on the lease when we wrote that letter, so there's a couple of things I want to deal with here first. So the value of that land, the assessed value of the land there is $495,900. The lease is for five years at $1. So that land is essentially being given to the, during the, for this period of time for $1. But it also has an automatic renewal, which means that this will automatically renew, and the only conditions for non-renewal are the conditions that are listed in that thing. So, and also to renew this lease, or to renew this lease, or to not renew the lease, causes is, needs mutual agreement. So in other words, to terminate the lease, you need mutual agreement. So essentially, what's happening here is this land is being, this land is being given to the association, the Flintlock Association, with essentially no revenue returning to the county. Normally this, right now, there isn't any, because it's county land, but there are many uses that this land could be put for, which would be revenue generating for the county. This also, there's some legal issues involved with this, too, because it's, in this lease agreement, you're essentially binding future boards to this lease. So if the future boards decided that, well, this isn't in the interest of the county anymore, they would not, perhaps not have a right to terminate this lease, because it requires mutual agreement. So that seems to be a very big issue, and it's a question of why the county would want to give up that authority or that control of this piece of land. A couple other things on this. In the actual proposal by the Flintlock, there's no requirements for membership. We don't, when we're reading through, if we don't know numbers, work criteria. Who can join? What numbers? Is there going to be 500 members? Is there going to be 30 members? They had a survey that said 76% of respondents wanted to, had said they would participate with membership, but there was no indication of the numbers that were involved there, so there was really no indication of what, of how much support this does have. Let's see what else we got here. And there's also, then there's also, we noticed in the lease there, that there was a stipulation that there would be non-residents involved in this, and the residents would have a, would have a cheaper, would get a break on the membership. So the question is, what's going to be the ratio between residents and non-residents? Is this going to be something that people from all over are coming to use? Is it going to be more exclusive for residents? These are questions that seem to me, need to be answered. Also, the numbers are significant. If you had 100 members at the start, but it deteriorated to, say, 20 by five years, are those, is that okay? In other words, the county, according to these lease agreements, does not have anything to say about that, about who is in the membership, or how many of them there can be, or can there be 1,000 members? And also, there's nothing in there about the cost, what the cost of membership is. So it would seem to me that those factors, or those factors would need to be considered in terms of approval or disapproval of this proposal. Let's see, what else we got here? Yeah, then there's a question, who will monitor compliance? There's, these are complicated issues. The lead mitigation is extremely, I've read through the best practices, and that is not an easy thing to do. It requires soil testing and all kinds of various things, and then the actual removal of the lead is quite tricky. So is this, does the association have the ability to perform on this? And on all the other plans, too. Where is the money coming from? It's not clear where this money is, where this money is coming from. So the main thing on that is, why would the county want to give up control? And that's what it seems like the lease is doing, it's giving up control. It might be a good thing to have a shooting range, but why would the county want to give up control? And isn't there maybe some better uses of this land that would be more revenue generating for the county? I, that's, I used some examples in that letter there, so that, I'm not going to go over that, but there are ways in which the county could make significant amounts of money off of this property. I just want a couple of comments on the sound study. So because we live next to the, next to this range, we're .94 miles from the firing line. There are all kinds of conditions that are associated with how loud that is. One of my sons was hunting this last season, a couple weeks ago. He was up on a hill, not far from, not far from the, well, it's probably 3/4 of a mile from the firing line, and he registered an 80-decibel thing. It depends on the wind direction, depends on cover, and you can, you get echoes, you get all kinds of things. So this is a very complicated issue. And there, in the sound study that they did, our property is listed .6 miles from the, from the site of the range, proposed site of the range. The decibel range in that, at our place, was supposedly equal to the decibel range at the Kimball Lake Campground, which is two and a half miles away. That doesn't compute, and it's also unclear, they said that the recording was done on the east side of our property, which, that makes sense. Our property, the closest point to this range is on the west side, and if, in that letter we had there, the high ground on our property is about 3/4 of a mile from the site of the range, with no intervening terrain. So the sound up there is not going to be 35 or 38 decibels. Also, because of our familiarity with sound associated with the range and down in our home there, we can sit in our living room and hear the range from just short of a mile away, in certain conditions. We had a neighbor who, five miles away, can hear it. So if those are at all accurate, which presumably they are, I mean, we experience them, that would put Kimball Lake, Trout Lake, Elbow Lake, there's a high ridge between the proposed site and George Washington, so it's surprising even that they had as high of decibels that they had there. So that was kind of an interesting fact, too, with respect. Anyway, the point I'm making here is, I don't, I think that was, the study was not saying it wasn't accurate in what they're recording, but I don't think it would be sufficient to really, to describe what will be the effect of the range in that area. It's going to cover a large area that's going to be changed fairly dramatically. It's going to cover a large area that's going to be changed fairly dramatically. Let's see. Just there, one other, one other, well, one other comment here is that, I, pardon, a couple more comments. In the, at land exchange with this, with the state, or with the, with the federal, feds, it said that the land was being exchanged for the use of septage and gravel. I went back for, and looked through all of the minutes of the Planning Commission and the board for the past, so long, as many as I could find, so I went back to 18 or 19, I'm not sure which. And nowhere in there did I see any mention of the, of the, this proposal, or the idea that this land was being exchanged for that purpose, for the purpose of a shooting range. So, that's just, I'm not sure what that means, but that's, that's something that I ran across, and it seems like that, that this is something that should be, should be widely known, if that land is being exchanged for, I mean, if it's being exchanged for septage and gravel, that's what it'd be, it should be exchanged for, it's being exchanged for something else, and that should be, that should be known. So, one final thing about this. It's not that this is not something that might be good for the county. It's a question of what's the best thing for the county? What's the best use of that land? If that land could generate significant income, is that, would that override the interests of, of the, of this proposal, or? So, that's the thing that needs to be, essentially, I think, needs to be considered in this is...
Okay.
Okay, enough?
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for listening.
And we're going to ask others who comment to present only new information, we've heard two sides, and only new information, and keep it brief. So, is there anyone else who'd like to speak? You can come up, sir.
My name is Steve Persons. I live at 135 Lanell Road. Thank you for your time to hear all of us today and, and for that really great description of this project. I was involved with the old Gunflint Sportsman's Club, who ran a, a range up north of Devil's Track Lake. And I have to say that this proposal for this range is miles and miles beyond the kind of facility that we were able to do, what, probably more than 20 years ago. So, I'm, I'm very impressed by the language that's been put into the proposal. I find it to be very doable. I'm sure that the people involved with it will pay close attention to following any conditions that they have on the range. I strongly support this proposal. I hope you will recommend that it be approved. We really need this sort of thing to support a longstanding, traditional set of recreational uses in Cook County, and to provide the safest possible place to perform that activity. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Does anyone else wish to speak? Okay, we'll close the public hearing for the public and open it for the commissioners.
They have to have insurance, don't they?
What?
Insurance?
Well, I've got a list going on what I've taken notes on.
Okay.
And that was one of them, liability and insurance, and that would be part of the lease agreement.
There are requirements in the lease agreement.
Okay. And then the good points, how many people will be using the range? That would be of interest to know what the projected usage is. And would you like to come forward and answer questions?
Yes, I can answer any question you may have.
Okay.
What's your first question?
Well, let's talk about insurance.
Yes, it's required, and we will have insurance.
Okay.
Liability, one and a half million dollars.
Okay.
Then they're going to have to have money coming in, right?
I assume so.
And if they don't have enough money coming in to pay for insurance, then they're not going to stay in business. So, I kind of think that this is a necessary evil of our county, and we should consider it highly. Training is very important.
Yeah.
I had a question about the lead. Oh, go ahead.
Just a point of order. I, I, we have a, a large group, and, and the, the meeting is broadcast on Wednesday. So, it, it would be good for people to speak into the microphones. I'm not sure everybody was able to hear your comments, and so it's important that we get all those on record.
Okay, thanks, Tim. Down here, somebody had a...
Yeah, I was going to ask, can you tell me about enforcement for the, the lead mitigation? What's that going to look like? That, that's my biggest concern, is the lead.
Lead mitigation? Yeah, there's, there's a lot of companies in the Midwest, and there's nationwide companies that subcontract to do lead mitigation work on shooting ranges, and it's what we're looking into. It might not be something we have to do every year, depending on the usage. It takes quite a bit, you know, lead in the soil to become a problem, and obviously, we're not going to let it become a problem. And obviously, you know, strong funding is what we would need to keep, to do that lead mitigation. There's also lead recycling programs as well, where they come in and pay you for the lead that they take out, then you pay them for the service that they're providing. So, yes, it's, it's something that we will have to have in our plans to do.
Okay, thank you.
That's another thing.
Speak into the mic.
Better be a better thing to have the lead in one area than in all the gravel pits around Cook County.
And there's wetlands in the gravel pits as well.
Yep, yep.
Okay.
Yeah, I thought it was a thorough application, reasonable request for the community, and I do feel for the gentleman who's got property nearby, but it does seem far enough away.
I have a neighbor who shoots all the time, which is, that's Cook County. Paul, do you have a comment?
Uh, I'm curious if you have any sense of a projection or goals in terms of membership? How many members are you, do you anticipate?
I think for the first year, we're going to anticipate anywhere from 50 to 150, if not more. It seems like every month, we have more and more people that come around that say, yeah, they gladly have a membership, and the membership is going to be open to anyone, whether you're from Cook County, you're from Graham Ray, you're from Toftie, you're from southeast Florida. If you want to have a membership with the Flintlock Range Association to use our range, it's just going to be a matter of paying for it, filling out an application, and then you'll have access to the range. And at this time, we don't have plans to charge non-residents any more than Cook County residents. It's just going to be one, we don't have our membership rates completely set yet. It's, so, so we didn't want to publish them yet because we didn't want to, you know, make any assumptions or anything, but the price isn't going to change. This, this isn't going to be an exclusive club. That's not what this is.
We have latitude for non-members to use the range?
Non-members?
Right.
So, you'd be...
A one-time use.
Oh, sure. So, a member would be allowed to bring a guest?
Okay.
If, if that's what you're getting at, so, no?
Well, the question is, I'm, I'm not a member.
Okay.
But I'd like to sight in my deer rifle this year, and you have a range with a known distance range, right, a KD range?
Right.
So, I would like to come up there and use that range to sight my rifle in at 100 yards.
Yep.
And, but I'm not a member, so would I have an opportunity to use your facilities for a, a one-time fee?
Yes, we've talked about doing some type of daily rate, or doing a sight-in weekend for, for deer hunters. A lot of ranges across Minnesota do that, a weekend or two, or a week prior, two weeks prior. So, that is something that we've discussed. We do know that, you know, for drop-in daily, people that just want to use the range, maybe they're up for a weekend or a week and just want to use it for one day, that would be tough for us, because we're not going to have an office, you know, and it's, it's going to have to be a planned-out thing, and we're looking at that, is, if there's any way for, you know, a non-member daily pass to happen. It's just, there's a lot that's going to have to come together on that.
Okay, makes sense.
How do you plan to manage the gates?
The gates?
The gates.
Put them up and lock them.
I know, then why do the people use them?
What, what do people, I'm sorry...
How do they get to use the range when the gates are all locked?
Combination lock.
Okay.
They get a code at the start of the year.
And I'm assuming...
Yep, with the membership.
Okay.
That's how Silver Beaver Gun Club down Lake County does it, and we've seen a lot of other ranges do that. It's, it's pretty effective, as long as hopefully people aren't giving out the combination to non-members.
So, just to clarify, there's no onsite staff? You let yourself in if you're a member?
That is correct. We do not have plans to have a range officer or to be staffed at this time. If, if that's something we'd visit, it'd have to be on a volunteer basis, because we probably would not be able to pay somebody to do it.
Jeff, do you have comments?
Um, a couple of them have been answered about gate locking and liability, so yeah, right now, I mean, I, I agree, the, the random shooting that happens in the pits is not the best scenario. You know, I've been to the brush pile at, off Caribou Lake Road, and come in and take a load, and there's people shooting, and, you know, it, you know, most people you can trust, but then you never know who's going to shoot the wrong direction. So, a controlled setting that has a designed facility for shooting really makes sense, and I've used a number of them in the past across the state, and they really make sense.
Okay. And Molly, you had your hand up?
Um, yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to address some concerns that were brought up about the lease, and make sure that everybody understands what the term is and what the renewal term requires. So, this is a five-year lease with optional one-year renewal terms, and either party may opt not to renew that lease if you give notice within 60 days of the, of the end of the term or end of the renewal term. So, the comment that this binds future boards indefinitely forever is not accurate. Any board in the future could give a notice to terminate. We did want to give the organization a solid five-year commitment, because they have big plans that require building, and they're, they're doing this from scratch. So, we did want to give them the security of a five-year term initially. Other concerns, oh, so, this lease is still in negotiations. We just had, I've been speaking with a representative from, well, I've, I've met with the Flintlock Association and, and folks from Land Services initially, and they're very agreeable to everything that the county has asked for here. But we're, this is not in its final form. I don't anticipate any substantive changes, for example, to the conditions about, you know, performance standards for shooting ranges and, and compliance with the statute. None of the substantive terms would be changed, except we are reviewing that discounted rate of membership for county members. That was an idea that came up, and I just need to do some research to make sure we're not in violation of equal protection laws by requiring that, or, or if the nonprofit were to require it, that they could be in violation of the constitution. And I can answer any other questions about the lease that you might have.
Does anyone else have questions?
I have one more observation. The sound study on page 10 depicts where the sound study was conducted. If we look at page 19 in your graphic recommendation depiction of where the range is going to be, it appears to be a considerable difference. I estimated that and did a measurement here on the computer. It came up at about 1.5 miles from the westernmost point of the property. Is that a meaningful difference?
Can I address your question?
Certainly.
So, I'm, I'm the person who put together the map on page 10. That didn't come from the Flintlock Range Association.
Okay.
So, I just wanted to take responsibility for that graphic.
Mm-hmm.
Because I haven't seen an actual map from the sound study. Everything was just a written description.
Okay.
So, that's why I created this map, was to do my best effort of trying to visualize that. So, yeah, there certainly can be some discrepancy, because it, I don't have, like, the specific pinpointed location that those sound samples were taken from, and I also don't have the specific shooting sites, you know, it's, it's an estimate.
Okay.
Okay.
That's awesome. Fine, by the way, okay.
Anyone else have questions?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Can you give a comment or response maybe to Paul's question about having a staff person out there?
Okay, that hasn't been talked about.
I'm one of the officers of the Flintlock, yeah, that was easy for me to say, Flintlock Range Association. My name is Clarin Cognis.
Okay.
That'd be a tough one to remember, but I've been on boards on ranges around the state of Minnesota, primarily in southeast Minnesota. About the only time we really, any of the clubs that I've been to that they actually have a range official or range officer there is when they're running something like trap or skeet or five stand, one of the, one of the sporting events that requires someone to come in, set it up, to run the machines that you have to have for those events. That would be the only time I would think they would actually have to have a range officer or a staff person there. If you wanted to come out and shoot trap, it's Wednesday afternoon from 2:00 to 4:00, let's just say, or, or Saturday afternoon. Those would be set times if you want to come out and shoot versus if you want to come in and, like Brad said, if he wants to come in and sight in his rifle, there's no time on that. But if you're going to shoot trap or skeet, or whatever we have for sporting, for shotgun sports, then you have to come out at specified times, just to make sure that we have someone there to, to run it for you.
Thanks for clarifying.
Sure, thank you.
Okay, anyone else from the board? Are we ready for a motion?
I had one question on requirement number four in the noise abatement element, requirement four, conditions of approval. Says from sunrise to sundown. Sunrise in the summer is pretty early. I thought in the county, we abided by the state noise abatement rule requirements, and I thought that was not before 8:00 or not before 7:00. Should we consider something like that, so that we don't have people banging away at 5:30 in the morning?
I don't think there's going to be that much people using it like that.
I, I don't either, but I'm just talking about some, you know, let's treat everybody equally in the county, and if, if that's the rule that everybody else abides by, then we should have the range abide by the same rule.
Couldn't we add that later?
This is a recommendation to the county board, and so the county board...
Couldn't we make adjustments of this goal?
This is, we're recommending to the county board the approval or non-approval of this conditional use request, and the county board will make the actual decision. So, we can put it in or not, and they can add it or not, but once it's done, it's done.
Right.
So, we need to get it there if we want it there.
So, there is no changing abuses of this process, this gun range? Something goes wrong, we don't have any choice to change things if we don't like what's happening?
That's a, Molly, can you address that? The terms of the lease?
Yeah, the, the lease is specific to the use of this land as a shooting range. The organization can't open up a store there instead, or, you know, it has to be used as a shooting range according to the lease. Is that your question?
Well, I was kind of, if, a couple of guys come up here with machine guns and wanted to open up machine guns on the range, and I don't know that that's something that I would want happening. I mean, is there chances we can change this policy as we go along?
Okay, Tim?
Yeah, Madam Chair, in, in going back and trying to tie in the, the concerns in terms of start and stop time, it certainly is within the purview of the Planning Commission to recommend if you wanted to set a specific timeframe that may be lined up with the Minnesota Rule 7030, which are the noise, is the noise rules governing the sound, that's fine. It is also kind of important to note that since we're talking about shooting, and it's surrounded by public lands, that a, a person could go 10 feet off of the, off of that site and shoot whenever they wanted to, provided they were within the noise standards. So, someone could go up with a machine gun and shoot, you know, 10, 20 feet off of that as long as they weren't violating the noise standards. the noise standards without this permit whatsoever. So it's just, you know, that kind of activity does and has gone on in that area for, for decades and decades. So this is just specifically about this one particular, uh, site or property. And, uh, to, to address the, uh, the issue of can we change, uh, conditions that come up? Well, we, we certainly can't. With A, we can determine if they're being violated and the, the permit would have to be, uh, addressed again. Or if we found that the standard set, if we chose a specific timeframe for start and stop and, um, we found that, well, that wasn't, we wanna adjust those times, then it would have to be when the permit is renewed, uh, at that time to talk about that issue. So it would be locked in.
The lease, the lease, we will have the lease.
Well, you can be dealt with on either, either or. You can deal with it on the conditional use if you want. If you wanna set that in the conditional use or you can set it in the lease as well. Those are the two, two options that you'd have.
Okay, thanks. Any other questions? So if we wanna put that into our recommendation, we should do it now.
Yeah, I just amend requirement number four to comply with the state noise abatement requirements.
Seventy thirty.
Seventy thirty.
Set it to Rule 7030.
Okay, so I need a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Amend condition number four. Could you repeat your amendment to condition number four? I don't think she heard you.
Yes, to amend condition number four, the shooting hours are restricted to comply with state requirement of 30, 40, 70?
Seventy thirty.
Seventy thirty.
Okay, and who wants to make the motion?
I'll make the motion to approve.
With the conditions as with that amendment? Okay, is there a second to?
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries.
Remind me who made the motion and seconded.
Make motions, I seconded.
All right. The next step is the county board and they will make the final decision. This is a recommendation to them from the Planning Commission.
On behalf of Flintlock Range Association, I'd like to thank the commission. Thank you so much. This is gonna be great for the community. Thank you for your time.
You're welcome. Let the room clear and then we'll go on to this B.
I'm excited about this.
Okay, and then any discussion can go outside the door? Okay, we're gonna move on now and to quiet the room. We'll go to B, the Cook County Housing Redevelopment Authority requests for a conditional use permit. Okay, Niva, do you wanna speak to this?
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is a request for a conditional use permit for a 22-unit residential planned unit development, Temperance Trails subdivision at 21.
Excuse me, could, I'm not hearing any of you and I know I'm older, but nobody seems to, I mean, I can hear a couple of guys here, but nobody else.
I'll try to talk louder.
Thank you.
At 21 Good Neighbor Hill Road. The applicant's property includes 29.37 acres. The parcel is owned, single-family residential, R1, and general commercial. Residential planned unit developments, PUDs, are listed as a conditional use in the R1 Zone District. Residential PUDs are not listed permitted or conditional use in the general commercial district. This property does not have any waterfrontage but is within the North Shore Management Zone. This residential PUD proposal includes a total of 22 residential lots. 10 units will be single-family homes and 12 units will be duplexes or townhomes. The development will have a shared community well, septic system, and a cul-de-sac road leading into the development from Good Neighbor Hill Road to access Highway 61. Each unit will have a driveway and garage. There are five different floor plans, all advertised three-bed, two-bath homes between 1,126 to 1,493 square feet. For zoning considerations, I have listed that single-family residential districts are a location that residential planned unit developments may be placed in. I've also included the language from the Cook County Subdivision Ordinance for planned unit developments for your reference. I understand that many of you on the Planning Commission haven't seen a planned unit development yet. So I'm not gonna read through all that ordinance language, but I just wanted to highlight where that's at for you, for your reference. There's a lot of ordinance language. All right, so page three. Uh, for background, this property is located behind Birch Grove Community School and is generally used for outdoor education space. North of this project site is FAR1 zone land. East and west of this project site is single-family residential R1. And immediately south of the project site is general commercial zone land. The land south of Highway 61 is owned Resort Commercial Residential and R1. For site conditions and considerations, the way I tried to lay this out in the staff report was I tried to identify, um, what the different planned unit development requirements were and then kind of how the application is addressing those items. So that was kind of the strategy behind this analysis. So for septic, um, all, the PUD, the planned unit development requirements do design, do require a designed, uh, septic treatment facility to meet Minnesota State rules. Um, there's also a requirement that the planned unit development submit a sewage management plan to Cook County Environmental Health, be with, and recorded with a final plat. For this application at this point in time, uh, site plans have a location identified for a community septic treatment system. Um, there isn't any design information yet. So this, it is possible with 22 units that that will become a septic, uh, system that is managed by the state of Minnesota. It might not be permitted within our office due to the large capacity. That would be probably more clearly identified during the preliminary plat process. For water, uh, the PUD requirements state that water may be provided by individual onsite wells or by one or more community wells, uh, meeting all Minnesota Department of Health requirements. For the CUP application proposal, minimal details are included in the application other than a statement that a community water system is planned. Um, by my communications with Minnesota Department of Health, it sounds like a 22-unit development would qualify as a community public water supply if it was all to use one singular well and require review and approval with the Department of Health and possible review with the Department of Labor and Industry. For wetlands, uh, the PUD requirements state that a conditional use permit application should include the location of wetlands and design standards are, are set to minimize impacts on wetlands. The conditional use permit application proposal comes with a completed wetland delineation and takes this into consideration with the site plans. Wetlands are not a concern with this development proposal. And for stormwater and erosion control, the PUD requirements state that the conditional use permit application should include details for areas of proposed stormwater management and states that stormwater drainage requirements are identified. For the CUP application proposal, there is a statement in, that I found within the declarations and covenants stating that all lot owners would be responsible for their own stormwater drainage. Um, my staff note on that is that the application does not include any details or identify any areas for stormwater drainage. To me, this was one of the more problematic parts of the application. There's just no real details at this point. And that could be ironed out during the preliminary plat stage as well. Uh, for impervious surface requirements, the drainage from impervious surfaces will need to be managed through that stormwater management plan. For slope, the development locations are well-suited for residential use. It's a relatively flat site. For noise, it's unlikely to be an issue with this proposed use with being residential in the residential area with a school nearby. For lighting, the application does not indicate what outdoor lighting will be proposed, whether or not there'll be street lighting on the road. For safe access, the access to the site is from Highway 61 and Good Neighbor Hill Road to the proposed platted cul-de-sac road. I did speak with the Tofti Fire Chief and he told me that as long as the road and the cul-de-sac remain a double lane in width, it should not be a problem for his fire trucks or emergency services vehicles. For parking, each unit has a garage and a driveway to provide for off-street parking. I did an analysis, um, on bottom of page five of the staff report or 81 of the packet, that it generally indicates that the density is allowed with this 29-acre parcel. So not a problem with that. Um, and then I also included some details from things that I just kind of noticed reading through the deed restrictions. Um, there wasn't, you know, there's some room for flexibility on, on those considerations. There was nothing too significant. There's just kind of some inconsistencies. Um, I noticed that Exhibit D stated that it would be a 24-lot development. So just some things to get cleaned up before the preliminary plat. Um, there's a building and design committee proposed to review their own plans for construction modification. That would be in addition to our normal county permitting, just a reminder about that. Um, there's a minimum floor plan area that's greater than some of the floor plans proposed in the application that I noticed. And I didn't notice any restrictions on short-term rental. It's not really something that you guys need to be concerned about. Um, I only mentioned it in here because of my communications with the HRA. It seems like that was gonna be something that they wanted to locally control in the declarations. Um, but again, you're not regulating the declarations. Um, that's up to them to kind of have that extra layer of rules. So these are mostly just inconsistencies that I noticed during my review. So again, not something really for the Planning Commission to be terribly concerned about. For public noticing, the application was legally noticed in the Cook County News Herald on November 17th. 34 letters of notification were sent to adjacent property owners as well as county departments, the Town of Tofti, North Shore Management Board, and the DNR Hydrologist. For exhibits and attachments, um, I received a comment from the Tofti Township Board Chair, Craig Horak, who submitted, submitted a letter of support for this project and Cook County HRA member Mary Somnus, who submitted a letter of support. For staff recommendations for consideration, this property has been identified as a favorable site for a housing project due to its close proximity to Highway 61 travel corridor and its single-family residential zone district. If this conditional use permit is approved to allow the 22-unit residential development, the next step is for the application to bring forward a preliminary plat and a final plat application of the Planning Commission Board of Commissioners as outlined in the Cook County Subdivision Ordinance. Recommendations for conditions of approval, should you choose to recommend approval. The drinking water supply, the drinking water supply wells must meet state code requirements per Department of Health. A full septic design with shared ownership of septic system with a professional maintenance and management system is required. Additionally, all septic requirements is outlined in the Cook County Subdivision Ordinance. Preliminary plat shall identify areas for stormwater management. A Cook County large-site stormwater permit shall be required prior to commencing onsite grade fill activities. All required state and federal permits, as applicable, shall be secured. This includes stormwater permits with the MPCA and community public water supply plan approval with MDH and potentially Department of Labor and Industry. And the road and cul-de-sac must remain a double-lane travel corridor.
Is someone here who wishes to speak regarding this conditional use permit? Do you wanna step forward and sit by the mic? State your name and.
I'm Carolyn Blood from Tofti. Live right up the hill from where this is gonna be. Um, I was concerned about the lighting, which you evidently don't know about yet. But I would think that would be downward facing so that it would be minimized. Um, would there be any kind of like, uh, restrictions for speed limits in this little area?
We're making notes.
Okay, um, and is it low-income housing?
No.
Not at all?
I don't believe so.
Okay.
I think it's market-rate housing is what it.
Okay. Well, I have some other questions too, but evidently there isn't enough information yet, so.
Can I just speak? If you'd like to put your questions out there, then we can answer.
Why don't you come forward as well and we'll move the mic over?
Point of order, Madam Chair?
Sure.
Traditionally, we have the applicant present after I give my narrative. And then after the applicant speaks, then we take public comments from the public. And perhaps the applicant might have talked about some of this that might have answered her questions.
Okay, so just scoot, scoot back.
I'm done.
Okay.
For now.
There you go. State your name and address, please.
Uh, Peter Grubish and based out of Bloomington is the, where my company is based. It'll be doing the development.
And Jason Hale, 425 West Highway 61, HRA office.
Thank you.
That's the address I'm representing right now.
Okay.
Um, I can answer a couple of the questions that already come up if you'd like, Chair, or how do you want to?
Let's, let's have the developer speak and then we'll.
Perfect. And then on that note, I did wanna make a point. Um, the, the agenda suggests this is this, the HRA's application is actually the developer's CUP. We are the property owner right now, but they're the one applying for the permit to be able to build the development. So I just, just point of clarification, it's not the HRA's application. We're just here to support the project.
Okay.
Uh, to answer a couple of questions brought up, um, one is, is it is a part of our agreement with the HRA is to bring affordable housing. And we use it as entry-level housing is, is how we're gonna term it because how do you put a number to affordable? Uh, with that being said, 25% of all houses built will be 290,000 or less. Um, the goal of this is to bring housing to the county that the people that work here can afford to live in. Um, we're not looking to come in here and build million-dollar homes. We're looking to come in, bring a product that's, uh, built well but is still affordable so that you guys can bring the workers that need to come here to help support your community. Um, as far as the roads and the other part of the infrastructure, we wanna get a preliminary approval that the plat was going to make sense. We've already had our septic designer out there. Um, we designed it in a way that there are six one-acced lots so that if the community system wasn't able to accommodate all of it, them lots were large enough that if needed, they could have their own septic system put on there. The problem is, is when you get such a large system, you always have to have an alternate. And with the wetland, there's not enough space to have an alternate site if it gets too large. Um, the well, uh, you know, it's a risk on our side to say we, we are, um, going to hopefully be able to continue to use that one. But if for some reason it doesn't meet the qualifications needed, it's then again on us to be able to provide that water. So that's definitely a risk that we are taking on by this project. Um, as far as lighting, if it's a safety concern, we're definitely interested. But our goal is still, you guys are up north, you're in the middle of the woods and you'd kinda like to still be that. You don't wanna act like you're a subdivision of, uh, Minnetoka, so.
Bloomington.
Bloomington. So with that being said, if there's a need for safety, we will explore that. But, uh, our goal is to not, to minimize the impact, make you feel like you are living in the Northwoods. Um, these houses, these houses are gonna be all well-built, brought in. Our plan is to do modular just because of the labor force. Trying to minimize what we can do and get it done in a timely fashion.
Okay, thank you. And Jason?
Chair, just one more, one more comment to, to make. The, the exact, so the, the site plan, I think the one that I'm remembering in my head that's probably before you, uh, the exact layout of, for example, twin home, twin home, single-family home, this is all gonna be decided by who decides they wanna buy a house there. Um, so in words, the, Peter and company are not building 22 units of housing and then hoping somebody buys them. That's a bad business decision. Um, instead, if the board approves this and we be, you know, perceive it the preliminary plat process and as Ms. Maxwell had mentioned, you know, there's a lot, the, the septic design, the, the, all these other pieces are required through that process that haven't been included yet. Um, if it turns out that people want more twin homes or more single-family standalone homes, you know, as a pre-sales, 'cause Peter and his, his group are planning on doing some pre-sales and maybe building one or two speculative homes for people to get a feel for it. Uh, if they're going to build what the market wants to have there, like what people want to build there. So all of that's to say, what you see now is what the projection is. But if people, if like the side-by-side townhome idea is really popular, single-level living with attached garage, like if people really want that, then they can build more of those. Um, but the density allotment is there anyway, so that's not really the issue. This is just what we're kind of conceiving is probable likely. Um, so all of that, again, is to say, there might be some minor changes to what, you know, maybe that's not a single-family, maybe it's twin, or maybe that's a single-family, something like that. Um, but the Town of Tofti has been a great partner in this. Uh, they've wanted to see housing here for a long time. Um, and we're excited to finally be able to bring something to, to the table there. And of course, uh, you'll be hearing from the HRA about like banging drums like, hey, we're, you know, let everybody know they wanna buy a house. Um, because we want to, we want to make sure there's something available on the west end. Uh, one final comment about the. One final comment about the short-term conversation that Niva mentioned. We have, in the development agreement with the developer, we have the restriction that they cannot, nobody in that development can rent their homes, short-term rental, Airbnb, et cetera. It will all be long-term rental. Now, to be clear, legally, we can't prohibit people from buying seasonal homes or something. That's not something we can do. There's conversation at the legislature about trying to talk through that, but right now, we can prohibit short-term rental use. But as long as someone buys it, somebody could theoretically buy three of them and rent them out. If that means three more houses get built for long-term rentals, that's not the end of the world. It's still three more homes. But we can't prohibit people, if they want to buy it from Bloomington or whatever, to buy a second home and use it for that purpose. But of course, the objective is to provide more homes for people who work here and want to live here full-time. That's the orientation.
The only thing I would clarify is, yes, the actual plat might change a little bit, but it can only change within reason of what it's designed for. A septic system's designed based on so many bedrooms, so we can't go from having three-bedroom houses to five-bedroom houses. That's not, we'd have to redesign all that. Not to mention, the well is only going to be capable of supplying a certain number. So, within reason, it could change a little bit, but there can't be massive changes without redoing the whole plan.
And one final, thank you, Peter, for that clarification. One final thing is, there's a, the school has a sort of campsite there, you might be familiar with.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, yeah, the northeast part of the property. We were just talking about this before the meeting. The HRA is going to, so the HRA still owns the property. We won't convey it until, unless this gets approved, they go through the plating process, and they have proof of financing in place, then we would convey so they can actually build the development. We're going to establish an easement, a right-of-access for the school to access that campground, so that there's no issue with moving forward, that those students can go there and still use that space. And they have a commodity for it to not have it in a lot or in a parcel, so it's going to be part of the outlot, but the kids can still go there and use that for the school.
Yeah, a lot of educational stuff out there.
Yeah. There's a trail, I think, there. That's not going to be, that goes like through most of the property, so we can't keep all of that.
Right.
But the little campsite will be kept.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Anyone else from the public wish to speak? Mr. Persons?
Can I speak from here?
Sure.
I just want to ask a question.
Sure.
Regarding the septic system, this would be, here, right, would be sort of a community septic system, one large site. How does that work when you have the concept where the homes are just going to be built one at a time, over time, as people are interested?
So...
Will that large septic system be the first thing on the ground, and then the homes follow?
Yeah, so all infrastructure is going to have to be brought in first, and then added later. That was the purpose of these 1-acre lots. If for some reason, depending on how it played out, we needed to increase that, we could then get an actual septic system design designed for them 1-acre lots to accommodate the need, if the current plan become max due to whatever we had built.
Okay.
But all infrastructure will have to be put in before any building can take place.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else wish to comment from the public? Okay, we'll close the public comment and talk to the board. Mike?
Well, one thing that I immediately would like to add is that they discussed...
Can you speak up a little bit and into the mic?
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. One thing that I would like to add is, speaking about low-impact on the surrounding aesthetics to blend in with the North Woods, if we could add something like that.
As a condition.
For the entire PUD.
Not to clear the whole thing and think they're going to plant some shrubs.
Right. To blend in with the North Woods aesthetics, as they said they were going to do.
That's kind of hard to, for one person, my idea might be way different than yours.
That's true.
Yeah, that was my concern, too, Madam Chair, is just...
Just too broad.
Can we make that more specific, with specific characteristics that you'd be looking for, if you're going to be adding that condition?
And...
Doesn't Tofti already have an ordinance like that?
Tofti has a design review ordinance and a design review committee, but that's for commercial buildings.
Ah.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
One way to maybe capture that is to try to put a clarification about removal of trees above a certain diameter in the non-buildable site, in the non-building sites, where it's not causing construction issues or something like that. Like, I used to work in Lake County, so when they went through and cleared out that campground, that was really shocking because they just cleared out the whole landscape, right? Like, we can leave some of the larger trees, and that can help capture some of that North Woods-esque feeling. So, there may be, I don't, it'd be difficult capturing a specific diameter, and maybe that could be done during plating, if there was more details about trees, like legacy trees you'd like to keep. But it could be maybe just like the spirit of the condition during the conditional use permit, and then maybe when they do the preliminary plat, they come forward more details of how they're going to capture that feeling in a quantifiable manner with tree conservation.
Mm-hmm.
That's my idea. If that sounds doable, relatively speaking.
We wouldn't be clearing trees on the lots until the houses were built, but you clear to put in the infrastructure, and then as homeowners wanted to build or to build a spec, to remove the trees to build the house. We're not looking to clear-cut the land by any means.
And when you're using a crane, you have to have a pretty wide swing on the crane in order...
Definitely, you have to have enough room to get the house in.
So, trees are, to put some limitations, and most, every time you run over a birch root, you'd kill it, so...
They grow fast, though, Judy.
What?
They grow fast.
I know, but it's tricky.
[laughing]
You think it's a beautiful tree, and you save it, and dies. Okay. And anything else, Linda?
I would just, that was just a thought that I had to try to keep the flavor of the North Woods.
And if they're, trying to sell them on the open market, they realize the importance of keeping the general appearance. People don't come here to live in Bloomington. So, they'll keep whatever they can keep as aesthetically pleasing, or put it back, so...
What does everybody else?
I'm looking this direction. Paul?
I'm curious, thinking about the flexibility in the single-family versus townhome, that if you moved a lot of these townhomes over to the single-family square footage, would you still be in that open-space requirement, density-wise? You know, because each of those units is basically 300 square foot bigger. I just, I don't know if we've done the math on that. That was new information, that that's not, this is not the final housing mix. It could change.
I think the other thing we have to look at, is part of why we have the townhouses in there, is part of the agreement we have with the HRA is to bring entry-level homes to $190,000 or less. From a building standpoint, the struggle we had for being able to accommodate that, we had to come up with something that was affordable for us to be able to do that, and that's why the town housing piece came in. It was the one way we could get in underneath that bracket to be able to bring that. So, honestly, I don't see unless there's a major market shift that we're going to be able to go away from having them townhomes for that $290,000 bracket or less.
And that's being stipulated through the HRA, because, I mean, the market might let you sell the entire place with, you know, single-family homes, so, but...
In our agreement with the developer, it is explicit, 25% of the lots that are rolled on, whatever that is, if it's 20, it's 10, at least 25% of those will be $290,000 or less, and they can be single-family ownership. So, they can be townhomes, that's fine. They can be single-family homes. But to your point about density, Niva, did you, do we have a max calculation? I don't think we're in danger of it, but...
So, I tried to capture, I tried to follow along the density calculations that were in the application, and the numbers weren't making sense to me in the way that my brain was trying to calculate them. So, maybe I went about the same question a different way. And so, I just took the single-family homes, this is on page five of the staff narrative, or page 81 of the packet. So, I took the 10 single-family units at the square footage that was on that gridded list, and then I took the 12 townhome units, multiplied them, got the total square footage. So, I came up to 28,000 and change of total inside living space calculations for the whole 22-unit development, and then I subdivided that by the per acre, the 29.37 acres. And with that, I landed at 964 square feet. So, the density, that's pretty well within that, not blinking, 3,000.
3,000.
Right.
We got a lot of wiggle room.
Yep.
Yep.
Heard.
Okay. And Jeff, did you have comments?
I guess, just a comment. I know this is out of our purview. It's in the stormwater ordinance, but I would hope that, given the visibility of this site from 61, that the stormwater infrastructure has a very green feel to it, in maintaining that kind of North Shore feel, because we aren't always real good at that.
Okay. I'm going to go this direction. Mike, did you have further comments?
I just wanted to make a, understand the short-term rental. What's to stop somebody from coming in there and buying all the lots and putting them into short-term rental?
It's written, the development agreement will prevent that.
That's not going to happen, right?
Right.
Correct.
Okay, I'm good then.
Brad?
Yeah, I, two things that I noticed in there. One, going through the HOA agreement that you proposed, there's a lot of restrictions on commercial activities, and work from home has become a pretty predominant thing, and I don't think we would want to restrict someone from being able to have a job working from home, or to do minor things like that. And right now, those are pretty much, you know, they're forbidden, and there's some things we should probably look at there in order to facilitate the families that are moving in here, and how they're going to make their living, home daycare, other kinds of things. Second area is, we live in Cook County. Everybody wants to have a boat. You said they can't be parked on the driveway. Is there any consideration for creating a parking area off to the side somewhere where people could store their boats or RVs, so that they're not in the driveways? That's a little more remote and in the back, or something like that. Just some considerations along that, so...
Once again, the HOA is a proposal. That's not the final. I have a few details that unfortunately are more maybe natural-based.
Oh, I'm sure that's the boilerplate that you kick out, right?
Yeah.
You know, print and attach, print Exhibit E.
Yeah.
Thank you, Commissioners, for that feedback, by the way. And the HRA, as we can, our agreement, we get a chance to review the bylaws before they finalize them, so those are things we can include in there to try to accommodate, as people continue to say, the North Woods feel, which, again, if you ask, may have different flavor, but I think that's part of the reason we talk about not having lights, streetlights, to preserve the darkness. Peter and his group have been very open to how we make it feel more like something in Cook County, and have subdivision or a vertical or something. So, we'll definitely continue to work on that and incorporate those things.
Right.
Charlie, your comments?
I'm very comfortable with it at this point, at this stage that it is. This property's been looked at for this use multiple times over the years, and I think it's a good site for something like this. So, at this stage and what they've proposed, I'm comfortable with it, so...
Right. And I agree, and I'm glad that the campsite is going to be preserved with an easement. It's a good asset for the entire community, so... Anyone have any more comment, or want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve with the stipulations.
With the conditions?
Conditions.
And I think you've got an understanding of where we're at with the North Woods feel and then the lighting, so it will go to the, well, we need a second.
I would second with the six conditions as written.
Okay. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Post-motion carries. Thank you. Now, it'll go to the county board for approval of the conditional use.
I think that's a good addition.
And we will get to...
There's one more. We got one more.
We do.
Uh-huh. See, is the ordinance, legal notice of ordinance changes?
Oh, shoot.
And that is...
Way at the back of the packet.
We'll turn it over to you, Niva.
Page 143 of 145.
Thank you!
You're welcome.
Yes, Tim!
How's Tim get credit for that? I don't know.
Oh, I complained to Tim about it.
Oh, okay.
Did you make the 345?
Okay, Niva?
Thank you, Madam Chair.
The county attorney and his authority.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, this.
Yeah, I saw that right away.
So, most of these changes are pretty minute changes that have just been poorly-worded things in our zoning ordinance that have been pestering me for the last two years since working here. So, I just want to take this, what was a quieter time of the season before these two really large applications came in, to put this before you for changes for the new year. So, some of these are just like old-gendered terms. There's some that kind of suggest only men can old-land, so I just kind of wanted to update some things. I wanted to clarify our lots of record date, because everybody always asks us that, so we always have to tell them. So, May 1, 1984 is the date that we reference as our lot of record kind of cutoff date. Essentially, any lot created after May 1, 1984 should be complying with our zoning ordinance standards. If it was created illegally, like some of these way-old-after-the-fact lot sizes that you guys have been seeing, sometimes they're created one or two years after that date, but you got to draw the line somewhere. So, May 1, 1984. So, we added that date in there. I wanted to add a shore-impact zone illustration, because sometimes landowners have a difficult time understanding what shore-impact zone is and what that 50% structure setback looks like. Again, it's not really changing what the shore-impact zone is. It's just an illustration to add to the zoning ordinance for clarity. Let's see. The most significant change is a clarification to the top-of-bluff definition, and if anything, it should be seen as maybe just a little bit easier for landowners. The top-of-bluff definition is a very calculated definition that actually can be manipulated by somebody by the angle of the line they do it at. It's essentially, the original definition was, top-of-bluff means the highest point of a 50-foot segment with an average slope exceeding 18%. So, you're walking up the slope with a 50-foot horizontal line, and as you're going up the slope, you're finding that one point up here that's exceeding 18%. But if you turn your line this way, or if you turn your line this way, a surveyor can really play with that location. And so, when we're on-site with surveyors, we all agree, this is a really difficult definition to use with landowners. Everybody doesn't like it. So, we're still using those numbers, but we're trying to add a little logic into it and say it's a visual break in the slope. So, it actually does make that top-of-bluff a little bit closer to the water body, because to get to that 18%, you're usually further inland than that, if you're following with me. So, this is actually a more favorable definition to landowners. It would make that top-of-bluff technically a little bit closer to the water body, but it's that visual break in the slope where all of a sudden you're starting to go down. So, we're trying to make it easier. So, that's the most significant change in all of these changes. Moving on, 4.01, it was a very nonsensical number system, so I'm just proposing that we change it to the actual section of the ordinance. The shorter mixed-use, forgot to get added into there, so we're adding that in there. 4.16D, it says minimum lot coverage for impervious surface coverage, but having somebody have a minimal 50% lot coverage also doesn't make sense. It should be maximum. It was a maximum in an earlier zoning ordinance, so this was an administrative error also. So, just trying to clean things up. We didn't have an example number for the density of hotels, motels, and resorts. It should say six. Again, some non-gendered terms, just kind of recognizing that the planning and zoning administrator does from time to time bring you zoning ordinance amendments such as this. That's kind of been a longstanding thing, that staff sometimes notices these problems and wants to bring them to your attention for potential changes, as well as potential rezones if we identify those issues. And I think that's the most of it. I did not receive any comments to these zoning ordinance amendment proposals.
Thank you. Anyone?
Staff recommendations?
Please adopt. Without conditions.
Any, anyone from the public have any comments? Hearing none, we'll open it to the board. The board have any comments? Want to make a motion?
Motion to approve them.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pause, done.
Happy New Year.
Motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to do it. I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Niva, all these, we've done a series of changes, at some point, are all these gonna be put together in a new document that reflects all of that?
Yep, so the current updated zoning ordinance has updated for the recent changes, so that is on the county website, but we should print you off some hard copies if you'd like. So once these go through, uh, raise your hand if you'd like a hard copy of the zoning ordinance, after it's all been done and cleaned up. One and two? Cool, sounds good, thanks, guys.
Okay, thank you.
Motion to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second?
I'm adjourned.
I'd second that.
Favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Madam Chair, can we take five?
Five.
Yeah, that'd be good.
I need some four and a half.
Four and a half's good, start now.
See you later.
Have a good trip.
Thanks. Are you gonna take care of job, I gotta take, find a job, I might have to, where do I find a job?
I'm gonna hit ya.
In Hoblin.
I got a question for you. I'm on the, 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 something or other.
Oh, it's okay.
It's a federal government IRS.
Thanks, Jeff.
But the lease couldn't change outside the parameters of the CUP.
Right, it would have to, both would have to be consistent.
It's a good deal.
I am Molly.
Hey, I'm Paul.
And everybody, they do everybody's up here.
Good job! I'm really glad it doesn't say the county attorney and his.
Molly's been the county attorney for how long?
They come in, do the tasks, right then and there.
There's a boilerplate, he, may mean she, and is permissive, it's like, who reads that sentence at the beginning of the deposition section?
It's, it's about time, please. It's about time.
Here we go.
Even though, I mean, they give you, the reason I signed up, so officially, I wanted to learn the tax system.
So what board meeting would you be going to?
I think this is the last action week of the year, which is right after Christmas, right?
I got a really good, I mean, the software is excellent, my computer skills are...
There will only be three commissioners there, so...
I just wasn't comfortable doing it, but I did.
James is trying to keep controversial items off. Anything that would engage conversation, so I...
Both of those items, well, mostly the shooting range seems to engage a lot of people, but...
Yeah, I don't know, talk to him about it, and...
Okay, I will.
I'll show you what your gut is about how controversial.
I think it's...
I'm at.
I don't know, yeah.
Yeah.
Are we okay?
And you, I just collect taxes, I assemble their doc, you know, some come with...
Yeah, there will be questions about the lease.
There's some equal access issues.
Tyson brought that up, and I don't know.
Bring him into Grand Marais.
I don't know.
And there they've got CPAs, retired CPAs, a former federal...
Yeah.
Laws and lawyers.
I mean, when you go to these, they, they have classes and workshops. When you go to them, I've never been in a room where everybody just loves doing taxes. It's really cool. I do, too. But I don't, I don't have the skill set for it.
When I woke up in the morning, I was like, I'm getting...
It occurred to me that you like a challenge.
And every day this week was like, fires pop up, fires, ever.
Yeah, I, I don't, but there is some self-interest, uh, interest in learning. In a sense, we've had, things we've run into, over the last couple of years, that's been like, oh, I needed to do that?
But I gotta...
You know, it's not far, like, let me, I'll give them a nice donation.
I think you'd enjoy it. I'm just so complicated, I, I don't do it, I, you need to be able to. When you sell something, you catch, take it back, so I hire it, so, but, um, think about it.
But they're getting back, this, this documentation gets backed up in the account.
Oh, two, two, two people do the return, but if you, if you talk, all you have to do is get the desk key and save it in order, most of the time, the place sold.
Talking with Jason Hill, there's a lot of Russian storehouses.
I bought it. Uh, TBD a little bit, I mean, in a very Hobland manner, to be a, in a very Hobland manner, you know, relying on this, the writing on the wall is not the subject.
I really enjoy this.
Um, yeah, I mean, why is that, kind of?
Backup, or...
Yeah, you know, it's, um...
But the fellow who runs it, there's a great opportunity, a retired guy, he used to be a border patrol, and he knows way more about taxes.
You know, those places where everybody rents their own stock, they sell their, their art, and then everybody volunteers to rent it, that's what I was gonna do.
Yeah, I mean... So I made Ross Margaret, and I tried to buy, basically, those places.
There's a system where I pick up...
So there's still that idea, kind of kicking around, it's just a lot more work to get there. Yeah, I mean, because she is, you know, especially a drinky, so, start making whatever food you want, but she wants way too much. Well, yeah, you know, which you want. She's, you know, you can't win. If a better deal is there to be on.
And I will...
So, after the second time, I was like, great, well, then, we just don't need to negotiate anymore, it'll be done, it'll be like, there's this other place, but, you know, it's like, there's a lot more to be done, but, like...
So we'll call the Board of Adjustment meeting to order? And we need to approve the agenda and the minutes for the note, minutes for...
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, we're going to do, New Business Superior Heights LLC, two zero two-three dash two-nine V. And Niva?
Thank you, Madam Chair, this is a variance request for relief from Cook County zoning ordinance, section four point zero nine C and nine point zero three, to allow after-the-fact creation of a substandard lot in the single-family residential R-one zone district, where a minimum lot area of one acre is required, as well as relief from the Cook County zoning ordinance, section seven point zero five, to allow a dwelling structure at a reduced Lake Superior setback thirty-seven feet, where a minimum of forty feet is required. The applicant's property includes zero point eight-eight acres, with approximately a hundred and fifty-five feet of Lake Superior shoreline, the parcels entirely contained within the R-one single-family residential zone district. Newly created lots within this zone district should be one acre in size and two hundred feet wide. Um, the applicant, Alex Shower, is requesting relief to allow this lot to be recognized as a legal lot of record for the purposes of development, and relief from the Lake Superior shoreline setback requirements. Development plans include two cabins to be placed on the property with a septic system and well. Uh, in here, I also have the zoning ordinance citation, which clarifies the Lake Superior setback requirements, as well as that lot of record definition that we discussed previously in the planning commission meeting, which the date of enactment was May first nineteen eighty-four, for a lot to be a legal lot of record. Also, the nine point zero three language is language in the zoning ordinance that, if a lot is a lot of record, then these are the requirements that our office uses to see whether or not that substandard lot can be developed without variances. Essentially, the lot is smaller than the zoning district requirements, so there are certain standards that should be met in order for it to be separated for another lot in common ownership, and then once it is in common ownership, in order for it to be developed without variances. For our background, records at the Cook County Recorders Office indicates that this parcel was created on June twenty-seventh nineteen eighty-five. Local zoning standards reflective of today's zone district were enacted in May first nineteen eighty-four. This property was recently sold to the current owner, the previous owner is the adjoining property to the east, Ernest Lamp. Additionally, Minnesota Department of Transportation right-of-way encroaches on the property in an irregular manner to allow for a drainage culvert, which decreases available building space. As seen in the photos, site prep began this fall. Site conditions and considerations, the development plans have a septic system designed and permitted, the location for the septic treatment area will be on the north corner of the property. The applicant has provided an analysis explaining the impervious surface coverage for the proposed development, which, which suggests the proposed development plans will result in seventeen percent lot coverage, and is within the twenty-five percent lot coverage maximum for shoreline areas. Wetlands are not a factor necessitating the variance. The bluff cliff feature present along the immediate shoreline of Lake Superior, however, the forty-foot vegetation setback is more restrictive than the thirty-foot top of bluff requirement, since they're essentially beginning at the same point. The application was legally noticed in the Cook County News Herald on November seventeenth. Fifty letters of notification were sent to adjacent property owners, as well as county departments and the DNR hydrologists. No comments have been received in land services during the comment period. Staff recommendations for consideration, this variance request is asking for relief from two ordinance requirements, the lot of record requirements. Essentially, this parcel was created one year after the zoning requirements were enacted, reflecting current zoning regulations, and has existed in its current shape for thirty-eight years. If this parcel had been created prior to the lot of record date, the lot would have met the substandard lot requirements of section nine point zero three B, which includes meeting sixty-six percent of the dimensional lot size requirements. What this means is that the lot would have been allowed to be sold separately from the abutting lot in common ownership without any variance approval. Given how long ago this parcel was created, and the size of this parcel being able to meet section nine point zero three B of the substandard lot requirements, it seems reasonable to provide variance relief and allow this lot to be developed and sold as an individual lot of record. The second variance, the Lake Superior setback requirements, one cabin is requesting to encroach on Lake Superior's forty-foot structure setback requirement by three feet. The applicant has indicated that the min dot right-of-way box is pushing the structure closer to the lake. As stated earlier, this is an unusual right-of-way shape, and may be determined by the Board of Adjustment to meet the practical difficulty element of the variance review process. If approved, the following conditions may be attached to this variance request. The property shall conform to Minnesota Rule seventy-eighty and the Cook County septic requirements. Number two, no vegetation shall be removed from the shore impact zone. Number three, no components of the proposed construction may be closer than thirty-seven feet from the vegetation line of Lake Superior. And number four, a gutter or catchment system or vegetation conducive to water retention shall be included on all new or proposed structures to divert precipitation and snow melt away from Lake Superior.
Thank you. Is, Mr. Shower, would you care to speak?
Hi, my name is Alex Shower, my address is two oh eight May Street, Mankato, Minnesota. Um, I'd like to thank Niva and Joe Ruth for all their help, kind of through the process, and for the, the board here for taking the time to hear this. Um, as Niva kind of said, I'm building two small cabins, um, they're gonna be very little, so the footprint of each one is at or below four hundred square feet each, as we know, this is kind of a small lot, um, so my structures are small, too, to accommodate that size. Um, when I bought the land in September, the Realtor had told me that this would be a buildable lot without a variance needed, and come to find out later, that that had been overlooked, and, um, we need a variance, so that was a little bit frustrating at the time, uh, to find out. Um, also, as Niva had said, there's that irregular protrusion with that right-of-way box around that culvert, um, so the, making that buildable band very little on an already little structure. So I'm requesting relief to put basically, um, a small deck slash set of steps to go down to a patio out front, um, and it's, it's not like there's a giant structure that's going to be protruding into that setback relief area. Um, I did have Joe out initially, before we knew about the variance necessity on the lot of record issue, uh, and the vegetation line at that point where that cabin is going to be, has a lot of discrepancy to it, and at that time, Joe actually gave me the thumbs up to build what I wanted to build without a variance, um, and later in talking to him, finding out we did need a variance for this lot of record issue, he said, you know what, throw that in there, too, with the three-feet relief request, um, just to make sure there aren't any questions that come up later, um, and, you know, I want to do things the right way, too, and make sure that this is all buttoned up correctly. So, um, that's something that I would like to point out, too, that there is some discrepancy in that, and I want to make sure that, um, we're on the conservative end of that setback relief request. Um, and that's all I have.
Thank you. Does anyone else wish to speak from the public? You can stay there in case we have questions. We'll close it to the public, and we'll talk to the Board of Adjustment. Paul?
Uh, I mean, I think the, the thing that sells it for me is that, uh, is it min dot right-of-way, or, I would, min dot, yeah, um, I think that that provides the, the practical difficulty for me, on this site, you know, a small site, and it makes sense.
And Linda?
I, I agree with that, yeah.
Brad?
He walked in, so, yep.
And Charlie?
Yeah.
Motion?
Motion to approve with the conditions as written.
A second.
Any further discussion? Let's run through the questions. Make sure we've got a basis here. Okay, is the variance consistent with the goals and policies of the land use plan?
Yes.
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 Is the proposed use of the property allowed in the land use district in which the property is located?
Yes.
Yes.
Is the property owner proposing to use the property in a reasonable manner, not permitted by Cook County zoning?
Yes.
Yes.
Has the property owner established a practical difficulty involved, is, that the practical difficulty is due to circumstance unique to the property not created by the property owner?
Yes.
Yes, the right-of-way.
Will approving the variance maintain the essential character of the locality?
Yes.
Yes.
Has the property owner established that the practical difficulty involved, involves more than economic consideration alone? Yes.
Yes.
Okay, we'll vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll send you a follow-up message tomorrow, Alex.
Okay, and the next case, Carolyn Dry, variance request two zero two-three dash three zero V. Niva?
Thank you, Madam Chair, this is a variance request for relief from the Cook County zoning ordinance to raise the deck with no increase in surface area within the shoreline setback located at fourteen seventy-eight Crawfield Road. The applicant's property is within the Superior Shores Cluster Development, which was plotted in nineteen eighty-nine as a resort conversion planned unit development. This PUD is approximately two point six acres, the applicant's prop cabin includes approximately zero point three acres, zero point zero three acres. Uh, the residential components within the PUD are contained within the Resort Commercial Residential Zone District, common areas are within the R-one zone district. Uh, this property is on Lake Superior and within the North Shore Management Zone. The applicant, Carolyn Dry, is requesting relief from the shoreline setback requirements of Lake Superior to raise the deck to meet the elevation of the patio doors. There's no expansion of the deck or modification of its current configuration, other than raising the elevation. Superior Shores PUD conversion allowed the resort complex formerly known as Howard's cabins to be brought, brought into private individual ownership. All Superior Shores cabins adjacent to Lake Superior were constructed within the shoreline setback of forty feet, and most are situated within the shore impact zone of twenty feet. As such, all may be categorized as non-conforming structures. All lakeside cabins have patios or decks in place as well. The photo on page thirty-two of forty-six, at the top, I kind of over-drew a little red circle to indicate her, her deck location approximately. Uh, for site conditions and considerations, this unit is a part of a shared septic system... For site conditions and considerations, this unit is a part of a shared septic system. The deck elevation change should not result in an impact to the septic. The compliance inspection was completed in 2023. There is no applicable impacts, impervious surface coverage, or wetlands. For slope, there is an eroding shoreline along Lake Superior, which has been managed by various riprap, rock, and cement wall reventments. The slope does not qualify as a bluff. For public noticing, the application was legally noticed in the Cook County News Herald on November 17th, 2023. Thirty-three letters of notification were sent to adjacent property owners, as well as county departments and the DNR hydrologist. I did not receive any written comments during the written comment period. Staff recommendations for consideration. The purpose of this request is to elevate the current deck to allow access to the patio door without requiring any stairs or ramp. Raising this deck to meet the patio as a walkout should have no significant impact to any use of the property or shared resources. If approved, the following conditions may be attached to this request. No increase in the dimensions of the deck. The variance is to allow an increase in the height of the deck to meet the elevation of the existing patio door. And number two, a land use permit shall still be required since this is a dimensional change to the deck, raising the deck.
Thank you. And does someone wish to speak regarding this?
Carolyn Dry.
Okay.
And, oop, I live here halftime about. And the rest of the time, I live in Winona, Minnesota.
Pull the microphone up and speak.
Sorry. Carolyn Dry, I live here halftime. So, the thing is, I would like to lift the deck and the walkway so that it's at a level with the floor inside the cabin. And I had to change the windows because they were like leaking and old wood things. And I thought to make it better for fire egress and also for handicapped accessibility, that I would put in sliding glass doors, which necessitate then, that you have to, you know, have a safe egress.
Okay. Anyone else wish to speak? Are you, are you done?
Well, it's one of nine cabins there, and my neighbors said that they have no objection to this, so there's nobody to talk about it, but.
Okay. Anyone else wish to speak? We'll, we'll close the public comment and then talk to the board.
I did a site visit. The lifting of the deck with no change in dimensions makes perfect sense in terms of the space. It'll actually create more air in there and probably improve vegetation retention and so forth of the soil, as there'll be more sun that can get in under that deck and, and things will be able to grow there.
Charlie?
I think it's no issue at all.
Okay, Paul?
No issues.
It's reasonable.
Okay, same here. Motion?
Motion to approve with the two conditions as written.
Second?
I'll second.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Motion to adjourn. Questions?
Questions? I gotta go through these.
Oh, thank you. I'm, show me the questions. Consistent with the policies of the land use plan?
Yes.
Yes.
Proposed use of the property allowed in the land use district?
Yes.
Yep.
Is the property owner proposing to use the property in a reasonable manner?
Yes.
Yes.
Has the property owner established the practical difficulty involved in, is due to circumstances unique to the property?
Yes.
Let's state that it's simply lifting the deck to, to make it safer and replace the deck.
Yep.
Will allowing the variance maintain the essential character of the locality?
Yes.
Yes.
Has the property owner established that the practical difficulty involved involves more than economic consideration?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. Motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, we really are done.
I'll send you a notice tomorrow, Carolyn.
Thank you.
Yep. Thank you.